Yes ma'am.
Good morning and welcome to City Council's regular meeting of for Monday, June 1st, 2020. Meeting announcements, council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. We have the next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I just want to say before we begin the Pledge of Allegiance that we want to offer our condolences to the family of our former colleague, Tanya Payne. She was councilwoman for, I think it was the sixth district. And she passed away this weekend, and we want to offer condolences to her and her family, or to her family, especially her son and granddaughter who, you know, we all know she spoke so highly of, often. So with that said, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence and to honor our former colleague. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and our next order of business is public comment. Madam, could you please say the name? I just accidentally lost my this name of the first speaker.
Who's the first speaker? I only have one. One second, pull it up again, I jumped off.
Yeah, I lost mine too.
Hold on one second, I got it.
We only have one.
So whoever the speaker, Elaine Ekman, Mrs. Elaine Ekman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, I am, I was gonna talk about something else, but since after this weekend, I wanted to talk about the protests. The Sixth Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees citizens the right to a fair and speedy trial. However, when police kill people while arresting them or attempting to arrest them, they're denying citizens their constitutional rights. So protect and serve is the motto of the Pittsburgh Police, but protect and serve doesn't mean to be the judge during execution or over petty crimes that don't warrant a death sentence. And for the police chief to pretend that this weekend's protests were about one person in another city is not only insulting in the meaning, but it shows that he's out of touch with the problem as well as the people of the city. And the protests are not about one person, they're about Antoine Rose and Michael Ellerby and John Gammidge, as well as Eric Garner and Sandra Blonde and Jordan Davis and Tamir Price and Breonna Taylor, and who knows how many more people who died at the hands of the police and didn't get the mass media attention that those cases did. And I think the Pittsburgh Police is in dire need of reform. We need police who are not afraid for their lives when someone is running away from them. We need officers who are thoroughly trained in racial sensitivity and professionalism, and also in integrity. Instead, our police bully taxpaying citizens in order to protect each other, their friends, and their own personal interests. We have a city that dismisses people from jury duty for saying they don't believe everything a cop says just because they're a cop. And it's things like that which give the police the false sense that everything they say is truth, whether it is or not. It's things like that that lead to the dishonesty and corruption which is prevalent in the Pittsburgh Police force. I don't approve of the violence done to Pittsburgh over the weekend, however, if the city doesn't act now to impose police reform, I'm afraid the protests are gonna continue and the violence is gonna get worse. And blaming the protesters is just a deflection of the real problem, and the real problem is we need police reform. So I'm asking you to make Pittsburgh the city to put its foot down against police brutality and be the model for the rest of America and end the violence towards the citizens. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. We have, we have no other registered speakers, and I did miss the order of proclamations. We have no proclamations to be presented either, correct?
Yes, we have one.
We have one.
Okay, can't see it, okay. We have one, one proclamation to be presented, to be presented?
Yes. Red, red.
Okay.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Argus hereby celebrate the decades of dedication and service that have been given to our community through the hardworking, diligent, and caring role that Richard Dick Wilford has taken upon himself. That the council of the city of Pittsburgh is hereby declare Friday, June 5th, 2020 to be Dick Wilford Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Number?
Hi.
Posed, proclamations approved. And our next order of business is the presentation of papers. Reverend Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, thank you, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning.
Good morning to you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 379, Resolution Vacating A Portion of Summer Lee Street from the southwestern corner property line of the Port Authority. The point of the beginning of Pierce Street in the Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
She's not on this morning.
Thank you, alright, thank you, Madam Clerk. But she has a bill for waiver of rule eight on my agenda, okay. Do we have her papers?
Yes. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 380, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for East Jefferson Street Townhouses at 128, 130, 132, and 134 East Jefferson Street. Bill number 381, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 1709 through 1715 Fifth Avenue. Bill number 382, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Family Mediation Center of Western Pennsylvania to provide mediation between tenants and landlords and training to community members. To prevent evictions in the city, training for community members with will help establish a peer mediation program to prevent issues between landlords and their tenants early on in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we have a motion for waiver of rule eight on Bill 382. Can someone make that motion for Councilwoman?
Madam President, a motion to waive the rules on Bill 382 so that it may appear on this afternoon's standing committee agenda.
Second. Second, okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, the bill will appear on today's standing committee agenda with Councilman Lavelle. And then we have Councilman Kraus, the Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Madam President, no new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 383, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June 9th in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of coronavirus.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
A motion to waive the rules of council so that this can appear on our final action agenda today.
Today, okay, and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions, the bill will appear on today's, at the end of today's meeting. Thank you, Councilman. I hope I don't forget like I did last week. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman, thank you.
Morning.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 384, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquencies Tree of Life Grant to Reimburse the City of Public Safety Overtime During the Tree of Life Incident and the Rossville Trial and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $1,500,000. Bill number 385, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Hillman Family Foundations to Support the City's Partnership with Operation Better Block to Support the Ongoing Efforts of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and its Group Violence Intervention Program and Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $100,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number 386, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Workiva Inc. to Provide a Subscription-Based Budget Publishing Software Solution for a Sum Not to Exceed $167,136 over Four Years and for the Payment of the Cost thereof.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman, thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have three communications.
Council President Kail Smith presents Bill number 387, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $1,000 Donation on behalf of an Anonymous Donor to Support the City of Pittsburgh's RIT to Tech Program. Bill number 388, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting $4,800 Fabric-Based Covers. A $4,224 Monetary Value Donation to the Mayor's Office on behalf of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Envelope Plus Canvas. Bill number 389, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh's Capital Project Accounting Close and Report dated May 29, 2020 in accordance with Ordinance 29 of 2010.
And those are red receivables, correct?
Yes, they're all communications.
Can we have a motion to red receive and file?
Remove.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, okay, thank you. We will now move on to unfinished businesses, or any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Corio O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 374, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for May 27, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 348, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Receive Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to Assist in the City's Emergency Medical Services Efforts to Prevent, Prepare For, and Respond to the Coronavirus and Further Providing an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $138,162.66. Bill number 349, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 493 of 2019, Which Had Previously Amended Resolution Number 133, Which Authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into a Three-Year Professional Services Agreement with Johnson Control for Security Camera Integration and Support Services by Transferring Funds from Equipment and Supplies to Professional Services.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills, will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 375, Report of the Committee on Public Works for May 27, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 342, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding to Update the City's Urban Forest Master Plan. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask About the $35,000 with a Local Match of $35,000 to Come Out of the 2021 City of Pittsburgh Shade Treat Trust Fund. In the Event the Grant Is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $70,000. Bill number 343, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Receive a Grant from the Keep America Beautiful Public Space Recycling Grant in the Form of 60 Clear Stream Special Event Recycling Collection Frames with Sonage Frame, 60 Cases of 100 Bags or Case, and Three Transport or Storage Carts with a Cash Value of $10,285.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, the bills are ready for final action, those in favor, might aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 376, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 27, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 248, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX, Zone in Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, Subsection 91506, Sustainable Development for Publicly-Financed Buildings by Deleting Certain Language and Adding a New Subsection 91508 Titled Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, bills are now ready for final action, those in favor will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, thank you. Councilwoman Erica Strasburg, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number 377, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for May 27, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 368, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Multi-Year Licensing Agreement with Cyclo Media Technology Inc. for the Purposes of a Poll Inventory and Audit Specifically for the Purposes of Streetlight and Telecommunication Attachment Inventory in Year One of the Agreement and for Inventory of Other Telecommunication Assets in Subsequent Years of the Agreement and Providing the Payment of the Cost thereof Not to Exceed $768,346.75.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, those in favor of passage will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye, sorry, aye.
Mr. Coghill.
I wish I had control of the button.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 378, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 27, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 345, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with a Fair Housing Partnership to Provide Comprehensive Fair Housing Training to All Relevant Staff Members of the City, the Housing Authority, and URA and Private Housing Providers. Training Will Include Understanding Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, Reasonable Accommodation, and Modifications in General Fair Housing Laws in an Amount Not to Exceed $64,750. Bill number 346, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City to Execute as Necessary Instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants in Favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to Permit the Installation of Green Infrastructure Projects on Designated Vacant Lots, Park Sites, and Writeaways as Funded by Al Qasam. Grow Grants Awarded to the Pittsburgh PWSA and Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into any other necessary agreements between the City, PWSA, and/or Al Qasam necessary to Implement the Grow Grant Projects for the Benefit of the Public. Bill number 361, Resolution, Amending Resolution 394, 2018, to Clarify the Appropriate Neighborhood Stabilization Program Reference.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of bills, is there any discussion on the bills? With that said, I'm just gonna say, thank you to Councilman O'Connor for serving on the Al Qasam Board. I will say that I was served on the board for a short time, and one of the things I did talk about was the green infrastructure at the time, it was years ago. And back then, it was not something that was really easy to pass, so I want to thank the board for working on this. But I do want to make sure that as we're moving forward with green infrastructure projects, we're working on making sure that the projects are actually workable, and when they aren't, as in the case of Banksville and other places, that we have some plan to help the residents, that we don't allow them to flood because we can't admit that we did something wrong, or can't admit that our, our project had failed in some way. And that's in the case with PWSA and, and mostly, Al Qasam was not involved in that part. But I just want to say that I think that we need to make sure that we're addressing those issues. Councilman, did you have some?
We agree, no, I just wanted to agree with you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for serving on there.
Thanks.
And then we have, we move on to motions and resolutions.
We need to vote.
We didn't vote, I apologize. All in favor of the passage of the bills, but aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we move on to motions and resolutions, and Councilman Lavelle, do you want to do your bill now?
Yes.
Okay, and so, we have a, we have a motion to approve the bill, would you want to read the bill, Madam Clerk, again? So we know what we're voting on?
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill number 383, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for Seven Additional Days, Thereby Making the Declaration Effective Until June 9th in Response to the Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated with the Spread of Coronavirus.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we have a motion to approve, correct? If we have a motion to approve, in a second. We have a motion to approve?
That's not needed.
Second.
Not need, okay, any discussion? Okay, the bill is ready for final action, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Councilman President.
The bills not receiving the legally required number of votes are passed. And now we move on to meeting announcements, council standing committee meetings is scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30 PM, and Councilman Lavelle will chair. If you'd like to register to speak, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by noon today. You may also submit comments to the clerk's office via their email at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. And if you send it to the clerk's office, they forward it on to all of us, so we all get to read. Council will hold a virtual briefing this Wednesday, June 3rd, with sessions at 2:00 PM and 2:30 PM as it relates to the PWSA PA Public Utility Commission ruling. A cablecast public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, June 9th at 1:30 PM via our Zoom platform on bills 236 and 237 relative to the historic designation of the E-Walt in Maury Addison Houses in Lawrenceville. To register for comment at this hearing, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by noon on the 9th. You may also register comments by emailing the clerk's office at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.com. And do we have any other comments from members?
Madam President, may I?
Please.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to speak to the passing of Councilwoman Payne. The, I believe the only members on the council now that would have served with Councilwoman Payne is myself and Councilman Burgess.
Oh, I did too. I served with her.
Were you here?
Yeah.
And so, I just, you know, I'd like to tell a little story about what it was like to serve with the councilwoman. When I, I came to the council, Councilwoman Payne was not exactly feeling my coming to the council in that, you know, we, we form our alliances on, on council and build our relationships, and she had built strong relationships, and I had ceded someone that she had built a very strong relationship with. And so, I don't think she quite knew what to, to make of me, but I took it as a challenge to make her my friend, and that I was gonna go out of my way to show Councilwoman Payne that I could be a, a friend and a colleague to her on the council. And so, I worked very, very hard to build that relationship with her. And as the fates would have it, we became very good friends on the council. I would refer to Councilwoman Payne as the straight talk express. If it was on her mind, it was in her mouth, there was very little filter to Councilwoman. She was very grounded in her thought and in her opinion. You know, regardless of politics, it was her personage that, that I so appreciated. You know, regardless of politics, it was her personage that I so appreciated, that she... I would go to her and say, "Councilwoman, I have X bill," whatever the bill might be, "and it's important to me, and I need your help and support." And in the beginning, would have to sit down and discuss what it was about and how and why I did what I did and why I was seeking her support. But as the years went on, we had built such a strong friendship that I only had to stick my head in the door and say, "Councilwoman, I need..." And she would just go, "I'm in. Whatever you need, just let me know. I'm in." Because we had built that level of trust and respect between us. So she will be greatly missed in many, many ways. And I was quite shocked to hear of her passing yesterday, far too soon in her life. Much more life left in her and much more to contribute to the well-being of this planet. So I personally, I know you will too, Madam President, will miss her greatly and what she brought to us and what she brought to the city and who she was as a person and what she meant to all of us. So I wish her Godspeed and that she rest in peace and that her family receives her deepest and most sincere condolences at this very difficult time. Thank you for the time, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Three things. Certainly, we send our condolences to the family of Tanya Payne. I served a few years with her, and I have seen her certainly after her leaving office, and we've always had enjoyable conversations to her son and to her friends. Certainly, you have our prayers and our sympathy. Second of all, I cannot let this moment go past without talking about the events of the weekend. First thing I will say is that our prayers and our concern are still with the Floyd family. George Forrest's death was premature and unfortunate, and his family has our prayers. That incident caught on video and spurred nationwide protest, even protest here in Pittsburgh. And so having thought about that issue really over the weekend, I want to suggest a couple of things. I think the first thing I want to say is I stand with the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and the American College of Physicians to say that racism is a public health crisis in the United States. And I believe that all forms of violence, whether, and homicide, whether they be homicides, suicides, mass shootings, officer-involved shootings of any type are wrong and should be prevented. Second of all, I think, or third, second of all, as I've looked at the... I have not yet had a briefing from Public Safety. I look to get that soon. But from what I have seen and heard, our police force showed great restraint over the weekend.
We left it in the park.
We are not, we are not the police force that we were when I first came to council. We have had a number of reforms and grants. We are doing a group powers initiative programs, the National Initiative for Community Trust, where we've went through various protocols. I think that the Pittsburgh Police is moving in a clear direction to be responsive, sympathetic, and embracing community concerns and community needs. I will want to lay this down because I know this will happen. You're going to hear voices because of this saying that, "We know we need more police reform," or "we need more police officers." That's what you're going to hear always. Because when you have these problems, there's always this tendency of the system to put more money into a system that is unfortunately not geared for the best interests of African Americans. If anything, we have to double down on the real cause of the problem. The real cause of the problem, they have been, we have been, black lives have been lost for centuries. There was slavery, and there were illegal lynchings in the South that, you know, they would have picnics around. This is not new, the loss of black life. And so if we are serious on stopping future incidents like this, although we do want good training, we do want good police, but that is a symptom of the problem. But that's not the problem. The problem is continually the institutional racist system that we have that does not provide economic opportunity to African Americans, right? It puts them in segregated communities, it invests disproportionately in wealthy communities, until the same amount of attention is given to Bell Silver in Arlington as given to South Side Flats and South Side, you know, South Side slopes, until the same amount of money and resources are poured into Homewood and Lincoln Limington and Lomer that are being poured into Shady Side and Mount Lebanon. When we stop the system of devaluating African-American homes, we stop the system of putting African-Americans in substandard schools, when the whole economy is designed post-slavery to exploit the black workforce. Until that stops, this will not stop. And so the real hard problem is not putting more police officers on the street. That will not make us safer. What will make us safer is to be honest that our structure of our economy systematically and purposely discriminates against people of color in this country. And we must do everything in our power to give them the full rights and opportunities deserved to them as citizens of the United States. That's the problem. That's the goal, and that's the solution. And we're going to struggle. It's going to be a struggle. I mean, my father and mother struggled with this. My grandparents struggled with this. My children will struggle with this. And I assume that my children's children, when they are born, will struggle with this. But we need to be clear on what the issues are. It's the police for the most part. There are some bad police, but they're rare. The real problem is when you have poor communities segregated by race without, where hopeless, and you have police in having to serve these communities where their life is on the line, where they feel disrespected and hated, where you have almost a war-like mentality. Until we address that fundamental issue in Pittsburgh and in the United States, unfortunately, these incidents will continue. And so we have to, so that's the solution, a solution. I'm working on it, Councilman Lavelle. I will have lots of conversations. There's places for other people to have conversations. But that's the real, that's, in my opinion, a lot of investment. And it's easy to move past that because when you invest in these communities, you have to change the structure of the economy. You have to change the decisions you make because it has impact. Every single time we do something that is biased and discriminatory, we are contributing to this process, and we do it all the time without any regard to what we are doing. And so we have to now be very purposeful. Every decision has to be made in light of its embrace of people, particularly low-income segregated people, low-income people in segregated communities. And so thank you for this moment, but I do, I also think that, you know, violence begets violence. There is never a time where violence should be tolerated of any kind, right? And whether that's violence against officers, violence against each other, or violence by officers. There's no place for that in a civilized, in a civilized country. So I have talked, of course, Council President, and I have talked, you know, several times about this. Our hearts go out to the families. But we need to now move as a city and find a common ground moving forward. Thank you very much for this moment.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other comments? Any other members? Seeing none, I'm just going to say, Reverend, I want to thank you for making your comments today. But I want to say we can't, we talk about changing things. I think we cannot leave out the fact that our school district is, in education, is part of those changes. And I think that we've got to make sure that our inner-city schools are invested in as much as our other schools and not just in terms of monetary, you know, funding and things like that. There's a lot that needs to be done in revamping what's happening in our schools. I mean, just the fact that we're, you know, this past week, we've been talking about summer youth employment. And so that's, we want to get the kids jobs, but yet we don't have the kid. The kids don't have laptops or computers to do the work that we're planning on employing them with. So there's a lot that needs to be done and a lot that has to occur. But also, we can't leave out the school district and the children because, I mean, definitely, they are our future. But without having that whole conversation, and I know that you and I and Councilman Lavelle have already talked about some of those issues. So I want to thank you all for that. And I do want to say that I think that our police department, at least our chief and some of our officers that were working this weekend, did a lot to help our city through this time, and so did our Department of Public Works, going down and cleaning up, and volunteers that pitched in. I think there's a lot of good, you know, I was looking at some letters I wrote probably about 15 years ago when I did a rally for public education. It was special education for the city of Pittsburgh. And I was looking at some of the letters I wrote to the editor and some other things. I was talking a lot about the divide and conquer theory and how that really works a lot. Not necessarily to help any of us or to help the people that we represent, but to help a lot of people get elected and to help a lot of different political sides. And it doesn't really help the people. And I think that the more we talk about working together, the more we talk about uniting, the more we talk about this not being a race issue, but this being a people issue, I think the more people we get on board because it absolutely is about people. And all of us need to take an interest and realize that this is all of our country. This is all of our city. This is all of our neighborhoods, and everybody is being affected. And you can't talk about loving your country and then not loving your neighbor. So I think that there's a lot that we need to do together. And so I'm willing to work and see what we can do together collectively. But I do want to thank the mayor's office and the police department, Public Safety Department, and our Public Works Department for the work that they did this weekend. It was a difficult time for everybody. It's still going to be a difficult time. I don't think anybody has the, I don't think it's a one-answer thing. I think everybody has a lot of ideas of what they think the answers are. But I think instead of fighting, I would love for us to sit down and have these conversations that actually, you know, results, not just have meetings. So I want to thank you for all that. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Excuse any absent members. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.